Good evening. This is Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. And anything you intend to broadcast may be captured and recorded forever and ever. This is Tom Sanford, Chairman of the Board. Permit me confirm that all members of the board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach?
Here.
Timothy Wheeler?
Here.
Carolyn McDonald?
Here.
Thomas Andrew?
Here.
With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:33 PM Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board, which is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Mass due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the general public to join. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I'll invite board members by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or your computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield the floor, state your name before you speak. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Thomas Andrew?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other mail or business that we need to attend to?
Well, there's mail from the town accountant. Quite a bit of it.
Okay.
We have to do anything. We don't think so yet.
You just got to verify the account.
We got all sorts of stuff from our neighbors and we got a copy of a DBA request for someone who would like to put a convert their garage into an ADU, maybe?
We should have, do we have the A and R plan that we need to sign to?
It's right here.
Excellent.
So we're going to use some special software tonight where you can sign on your screen and it will end up on this paper.
Wow.
Okay.
I want to see that.
Really simple signature that I can copy. Picked it up, but.
Okay.
We could take turns going down. We could leave it with D. You could sign it at the town building. Or you could wait for me to run it around, but right now I'm a little bit overloaded. Take a while. Got any other ideas? Can we somehow sign it electronically? We already discussed this.
Well, I mean, you could do it sort of round robin if you wanted to drop it by with me, or if you wanted to tell me a time tomorrow when I could come by and pick it up. I could, I could sign it and then pass along to second person.
That would work.
Okay. Okay, so just after the meeting, text me what your preference is for making the exchange, okay?
Sounds like a drug deal.
Right. Well, a very dumb one to put it on.
Public forum and you're texting.
Well, if it is, it's an approval, not required drug deal.
That would work. Yep. Our agenda tonight, though, um, is a little sketchy because did you guys read what I sent you?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, the thing about the parking lot, you know, I sent you the letter from the Butters and
Yes.
I think I want to know a little more about who is responsible and how for things that go on in the parking lot. Cause I don't know that it's been consistent so far. Some of them we didn't even know about. Some we do know about. We're not sure whether we can vote on it, right? And I was going to try to get someone from the Select Board and the ZBA to join us. I don't know if anyone did. But that would be a way for all three groups to talk to each other and come up with something pretty straightforward about how those decisions get made and who the proponent um presents their case to.
But I thought we were pretty clear about the Planning Board last meeting that with respect to this particular use, we didn't, the Planning Board had no objection and no aspect of zoning bylaws that we thought bore on the issue. And so it became a permitting issue.
Right. They, we were thinking they would apply for a special permit, which is not us. Where, when the bond people were coming to us, it was for a use that isn't allowed.
Oh, okay. I remember we did discuss it. I have to go back to the notes.
If they follow. What I just said was our consensus last, last time.
Yeah, and I think if they follow what transpired last time, which is that they, they go to the Select Board and go through the process of requesting a permit for an event essentially. And then the Select Board would post the notion that they're going to review it, I would assume, and a Butters would have an opportunity to go and speak with the Select Board about any requirements that might be placed on the operation during its existence, like this, similar to the circus. And evidently the circus had some issues and a Butters had some concerns which they shared with the mall folks, and I assume they shared with the Select Board. Um, so I would assume that that path would be the one that would be followed again this time.
Yeah. I mean, to illustrate, I think our position, you know, think about it, if somebody came and wanted to put up a temporary iron foundry for you know, for three months, we would say, no, that's not a use that's allowed in the overlay or the underlying district. Although now that I think about the underlying district, I'm not so sure. Anyway, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's the sort of question that we deal with. Not the, not the issues of permitting and event related issues.
Um, okay, so just, yeah, we did discuss this last time and we actually had a motion and we voted to send a communication to the Select Board that we don't see it as a zoning land use issue.
And I may have volunteered to do that, and I thought of this when I was getting ready for this meeting. I went right into a meeting with our Tokyo office afterwards and then, you know, the next morning I'd forgotten that, but I can certainly document that at this point again. And my apologies.
Okay.
Getting, you know, seasonally, I'm getting to the point where I can sometimes hide my own Easter eggs, you know?
So if, if someone, if we look at two issues, if someone has some use they're proposing for the parking lot, do we want them to come to us first and find out whether our overlay agreement allows it and then they go to the Select Board to petition for it, or what do what do we direct them to do?
Well, that's, I mean, that's, um, yeah, there, there, there are a number of ways to do that. If you're planning an event, typically I think you would go to the Select Board and if the Select Board had a question about it afterward, when they came in, like, is this the use? They could refer it to us. Somebody can come in the way they did to us and we can say, we can answer that question upfront and forward it. Unfortunately, I don't think there's you know, a right way or an established way to do it, but the boards just have to work together.
And the ZBA is not involved then, right?
Right. Not, yeah, not to my, nothing comes to mind.
Okay. All right. I'll write that down. So they have two choices. Yep. And then the Butters, when, when a town resident has a problem with noise, cars and whatever associated with one of these event, Vince, where would we send them?
Well, yeah, again, I think that we're, we're talking about ultimately the selectmen you're talking about in, in a given moment, um, the police, if somebody is exceeding noise limitations or hours of operation, the police are available. But at that point, what you're talking about is you would have had some kind of hearing with the, um, the Board of Selectmen, they would presumably have established some parameters for the event. Hours of operation, noise, you know, I don't, I don't know what they would be, but I mean, that, that's the sort of thing that you would do. And then that would be established. And again, at the moment, if a Butters felt that that effectively event license and conditions was being violated, they could call the police. Like you would call the police on a noisy party next door and ask them, in this case, you'd be referring to the event permit and those conditions.
In that regard, it's similar to the concert series at 19 Carter, for instance, that ends up being weekends for an extended period of time. They seek a an authorization from the Select Board, you know, and this criteria that are established for its operation, you know, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's a perfect example. Yep.
Um, when you would like questions from the audience, there is a hand up.
Okay, not just Jack, we're going to, um.
Yep.
But thank you.
Um, yeah, I mean, our board is not an enforcement board.
Except in very limited areas where the, but you're right, certainly not with respect to this.
You have anything else, Jack?
Um, well, so there's, there's not any other new items.
No, I meant with this.
Oh, with this, um. I don't think so. I think we did.
And again, Jay, I will write up what we just said and put, put that around. I don't have meetings tonight afterwards, so I'll remember.
All right, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Okay, can, Carolyn, can you elevate the person that had the question?
Hi, it's Kim Brown and Michael Harding. Um, thank you for your time this evening and thank you for discussing this topic. Uh, the neighborhood has had a chance to discuss since our last, um, meeting together on the 27th of February. And we ourselves have a process too that we would like to nominate, whether it comes to the uh, Planning Board or the Select Board, but we seem to be the last ones to know that there's something going in our backyard. And that is always very worrisome and troublesome because we have the product of the noise and the hours and not being informed of what's going on. So I like this component at 19 Cardy with Carter with the authorization form. Think that the neighborhood could, um, work with the Select Board, the Planning Board and the zoning board to have some authorizations in place so that these committees of volunteers would understand what happens in the neighborhood when you make a decision based on the business or the tax revenue or someone making a plea, but in all actuality, all of our homes were there before any of these businesses were there. And, um, we'd like to work with you. We'd like to have a clear process. We think that we should be upfront, not at the tail. And we have called the police on the buses. We have called the police on various noises at the mall. There's not a whole lot they can do. So I think that we have to have something in collaboration with the police as well, so that when the authorization comes out about hours and noise level, they say, yep, you're right. It's there. It's clear. We'll take care of it. Otherwise, the neighborhood is calling and sending and talking to mall security over the police because the police can't do anything and, you know, we're not getting a whole lot accomplished. So let's, let's work collaboratively. Let's have the, a better know in advance before a zoning board, a planning board or selectman make a decision based on what's in our backyard. We really appreciate that.
Well, may I just add to that, that when you talk to the selectmen about this, you suggest, I would suggest that you make it an express condition of whatever permit that the town operating through the police, you know, will, will have the ongoing authority. I mean, it, it should be obvious, but if it's there, uh, on the paper, I think that, uh, that that would make the police so on more comfortable going forward. So, you know, have, have them acknowledge that enforcement.
Thank you, Thomas. I totally agree with that. But again, we've got to start, start first with, before we make decisions on permits, letting the Butters know. We have three different things that have been.
Well, of course, Karen, there, I totally disagree with you. I totally disagree with you on that one because when there is an official request made or when somebody's coming to speak to us, if it's, you know, if it's a quorum, it is publicly noticed. These are public meetings. Um, you are not the last to know. You get, you get to notice as we know a little bit beforehand because somebody approaches us and then we have to put out the notice. But we always put out the notice and we always talk about it.
Well, I'll, I'll bet, I, I won't quite agree with you, Thomas, because last week it was the Fun House and it was on the agenda for the first time and you made the decision for the first time and no one told the Butters unless we were on the, on the call. A lot of us have travel and lives and things and it would be a much more collaborative, and I'll use that word again, experience if we collaborated on these things and had more of an outline. So that when the Fun House comes in and asks for three and a half months, all the weekends till nine thirty at night, there would be a guideline that says, oh, wait a minute, we've already agreed with the neighborhood. Yeah, three and a half months, eight o'clock at night, and here's the noise level. If you had something in play like that, that would be a heck of a lot better.
Well, you do now have the opportunity to approach the selectmen on this. If we were to have set, I will, I will say to you that if we were to have the board to have set the conditions, there would have been other meetings. You would have known about those details ahead of time. This was a situation where somebody was coming to us to say, were we the proper venue for this? And we were saying, no.
Right. You said no, but you said we support it. We'll send it to the selectmen to let them know that we support it. That doesn't help the neighborhood because you didn't give the neighborhood.
I think, I, well, and, and again, my bad because I hadn't written it down, but I, I said, we had no objection on the basis of the zoning bylaw and use limitations, not that we endorsed it or supported it.
Well, again, I think that the neighborhood appreciates because you are the Planning Board and as far as we last knew, you were in charge of the retail overlay district. We never understood that that retail overlay district was going to house outdoor businesses that was going to create noise and business after hours. That was not something in the original package. And it is better to have the conversation with the neighborhood. We are impacted.
And, and absolutely, but all I'm saying is we had a question, we put it on the agenda, you guys attended. Our determination was that we were not the appropriate venue, so nothing went forward. If we were to have been a permitting venue, there would have been other meetings. That's all I'm saying. And there would have been cooperation, you know, on those, uh, on those, on those topics. Uh, in terms of, you know, you have a zoning, an underlying zone and you have a zoning bylaw that was written, um, uh, 30 years ago, um, uh, you, we didn't necessarily understand that this was allowable. You know, 30 years later, somebody comes in, you have a certain set of facts and activities and you just, you have to, um, you have to apply those. But yeah, I wouldn't have guessed it 30 years ago either.
Well, maybe the conversation is just around the changing, um, guidelines around the, the, um, retail overlay because I, I really don't recall anywhere in that retail overlay district, anything about businesses in a parking lot to this day.
Well, I will, uh, I will, uh.
And the neighbor shouldn't have some input to that because we've been in the backyard of this mall for 30 years. So we have some real knowledge.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, yes, absolutely. I would, I would also suggest that, you know, there are things that will be happening over the next year or so, I suspect, with respect to, uh, the mall and different uses. And so that's going to be, um, and I, I would, I don't think it's for the rest of the board and I would defer to them with any further comments, but it certainly seems to me that's going to be something that we're going to have to grapple with over the next year. And you guys will know that we have to grapple with it and, uh, you know, your, your input will be welcome.
Great. And let's just keep that word collaboration upfront because we really do want to collaborate and educate and help people understand what has transit, what has transpired and what could transpire and what will keep our neighborhood a neighborhood. So we appreciate the consideration.
Absolutely. Okay, I've talked too much. Rest of the board members.
Yeah, actually, um, you're right in that the, the plan right now on the part of the city of Marlborough is to have the city council react to a series of proposals that were put forth in that Metropolitan Area Planning Commission report from 21. And I think they, they would like to act on um, changing zoning in the whole Donald Lynch Boulevard corridor um, sometime in the next three months. And uh, I think what, what, when I met with the mall folks a couple of weeks ago, I said that it seemed to me that it was important to segregate uses that might be allowed on the overlay district in Berlin and Marlborough from the rest of the zone. And that there most likely would be uses that Marlborough would allow on the corridor in Marlborough that wouldn't be palatable in Berlin. And that given the fact that they only needed a city council approval for their zoning change, where we needed a two thirds vote at town meeting. Um, it was important for the mall folks to understand that anything they could do to relay that message to Marlborough would be wise on their part because I imagine there, well, if you look at that use chart from the study, there, there are uses certainly in the corridor that I don't think Berlin would be satisfied with at all. So, um, but I think the, the mall folks would like to come to town meeting in the fall. Hopefully there'll be a town meeting in December. And, you know, they, they'd like to have modifications at that point to the overlay. So I think the works cut out for us probably as we get into the, right after town meeting, we're going to have to start sitting down and looking seriously at that list of activities in the use chart. Um, and then make some decisions about how we go about modifying the development agreement in what ways. And, and address some of the issues that the neighbors have had in regard to um, the standards and things like that. So I think the opportunity is there to make some positive modifications.
Good. Thank you. We, we appreciate that, Tim. It's very collaborative.
Have they set another meeting time, Tim?
No, um, I think what we should perhaps try to do is maybe at one of our next meetings, go through that use chart and sort of come up with some consensus about activities that we, we feel comfortable with because they're allowed in other parts of town already and um, they seem compatible with, with what we might believe would be appropriate and and make it clear that there might be some uses on that use chart that just wouldn't fly. So they know early on that a, a simple, you know, one size fits all isn't going to probably work. And the council they brought in um, heard that message and understood and I, and also sort of relayed the notion that you could isolate the mall from the rest of Marlborough's zone and that there might be an exclusion of some uses that were allowed on the strip because they, they really do want to say that whole corridor is one use. I mean, one, everything on the use chart is going to be allowed in the whole corridor. Um, and I just said, it's not that simple over here. It's
No, and as I, as I remember it, I mean, they, they really can't unilaterally change that, um, with respect to the overlay.
That's the, that's the way I looked at it and I thought it would, you know, I think if you have a chance to, to look at some of that language again, Thomas, it would probably be helpful for us and then.
No, I'd be happy to, um, I need to find it at this point. It's been a lot of computers and a lot of, uh, time away, but anyway, okay.
I've got, I've got copies of the development agreement and I think I've got copies of the, the report, report one and report two that we put out.
Okay.
I mean, it's interesting. In two weeks, it's the 30th anniversary of the town meeting vote.
Yeah.
Cause it was the 26th of March, right, Thomas?
Right birthday boy.
Yes, sir. And, uh, we stood on the town hall steps and watched the Logan Express buses tour the town and said, holy mackerel, what, what is going on? Um, yeah, that was 30 years ago in two weeks, so.
Yep.
Well, we have three meetings before town meeting and we have to have a public hearing on our warrant articles. So I don't know how much of an opportunity we'll have to really tear into this.
So I think we, we can do it after, Timmy. I, I will look at the stuff in the meantime.
Yeah. Um,
Right, because we're not talking the spring town meeting.
No.
No, we're not, but I, I, I would like a chance to discuss it before we get to town meeting because they're going to, I think we need, we need to say to them clearly that the Planning Board has looked at the chart. And I don't think we can wait till the end of May to, to, to reflect that to them. We need to say to them in April, essentially, there, there are parts of this use chart that won't fly and you need to know that right now. And you need to set the things in motion to make it possible for Marlborough to isolate. And especially if we review the language of the development agreement and the zoning and the inter municipal agreements and stuff and say. Inter municipal agreements and stuff and say. You know, Marlborough, you can't go anywhere without us anyway, so, um, you know, step up to the plate here.
Will we have an opportunity to review all of the documentation that we want to before our next meeting? Cuz my suggestion of you, we, we do the, we have to post the hearings and stuff anyways, and so we're probably not. Being able to hold our public hearings for the warrant articles until April anyways.
Right.
Okay.
Wait, so perhaps we take this up at our next meeting.
And the warrant articles are. The zoning change on River Road. The, the update to the over fifty-five.
Yep.
Signs.
And the signs, right?
Yep.
So it's not heavy lifting in terms of.
Oh, it's just time.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta post the, we gotta post the hearing, but, so. I think.
Yeah, what, what, what I can do is, I, if, Tim, if, uh, and you know what? I'll bring the A and R plan to you after I get it, and then maybe I could pick up some copies of those materials, and we'll be very efficient.
Good.
And I will look at that and give you guys a summary of that before the next meeting. And then we need to, to get a copy of those. I probably have them, but it'd be good to get them resent, but. The, uh, the use charts that Marlborough presented.
Yeah, so I sent those around a couple weeks ago, but I'll send.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, I, I'm sure I have them, uh, then.
So I sent.
I was up in Vermont for a little while, so, yeah.
I think I sent the full document from the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, then I sent the, just the pages from the use chart independently.
No, I'm, I'm sure I have it.
And the use chart, you know, some of it is check, 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 you know, we, we allow it anyway, and. You know, it's, it's okay in that zone, and then there are other things that we. I think collectively probably say, well, wait a minute, this isn't. This isn't what we intend or would want to have happen.
So that next week, what we aim to do is, you know, prepare, uh. Policy statement communication of our position on. Marlborough's ability. To, uh, change uses in the overlay zone. And for people to have familiarized themselves with the use regulation, so we can go and tick and tie that, and then I think if we do that, the next. Meeting will, uh. Will move that ball forward.
Yeah, and then that can get relayed to them, and then their council and the city of Marlborough can realize that. It's not just simply their modifying their strip, it's gonna be another layer of activity. Which would be fine, that'd be good. And then they can put things in motion to try to decide how they progress on their side. Cuz we don't want the city council to be acting and then having to. Come back and realize that they had to undo some stuff, so.
I have an administrative question for the board, do we want to? Put the, um, use regulation chart that we'll be discussing, uh, as an attachment to the agenda for next. For next meeting, you know, in the spirit of collaboration and, you know. Having, uh, people in the neighborhood have a chance to see what's out there before we discuss it.
Yeah, no, that'd be good.
Where do we find that?
I've sent it to you, and I'll send it to you again. How many times do you want it?
Did the, did the hundred and something page document you sent, was that?
No, it was an email with like five or six attachments.
Yeah, but the, but the big plant, the big, um.
The big plan has it at the back of it.
But was that new, or you were just mentioning?
That was nineteen, that was two thousand and twenty-one.
Oh.
But Marlborough let's, it, it slept on it for quite a while, whereas. We had been reading it and, and said to the mall folks. Let's be proactive here, if you think these are changes that you wanna see, we need to have some discussion, so. We can prepare for, you know, prepare properly for a town meeting, and. Obviously, some of these uses are uses that we wouldn't accept. Um, and they said, yep, yep, that's good, and, and they changed their. Facilitators and consultants, and as a result, got delayed a little bit, but then Marlborough came in and said, with a new mayor. Um, we've read this report, it's exciting, we think it's wonderful, we're trying to rejuvenate Donald Lynch Boulevard, and we're gonna. Take some of this to the city council, um, in the next quarter, and then the mall folks said. I guess we better bring Berlin into the conversation. Um, and the mall consultant decided they wanted to bring counsel to the meeting. And he was not. Up to speed in terms of the different types of agreements, but he's got those now, and he's digesting those, so I think. Between what we'll come to communicate to them and what they may realize on their own, I think. There'll be a battle plan drawn up that. Makes more sense.
So you wanna post the proposed use. Chart from.
Table.
For ours.
Yes.
The Marlborough one.
From Marlborough, the one we'll be discussing. That's what I was suggesting.
We got six PDFs with only one page on each PDF.
I can, you, you, you have that in the back of the hundred and twenty-page document? So you could pull those pages off.
Well, I can combine it, it's gonna cost you extra.
You're better at this than I am, and. Instead of five individual pieces, you'd probably have one, I imagine, huh?
We have the technology.
All right.
But that's where it is, it's at the back, that's all I did was copy those off.
So I can post that on the planning board part of the town website, and then refer to it, I don't know if you can actually attach it to an agenda.
You can put it on my town government under the notes for the me- meeting.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Where the minutes get uploaded?
Yes, I know that, but you can't. I don't think you can actually attach it to the agenda itself.
Yeah, you can.
You can, okay.
Yep, down at the bottom of the page when you post the meeting.
Yeah.
There's a place to upload supporting documents.
Oh, you know what, I think I have seen that, okay, I'll do that, yep.
Okay, so Karen, watch that space.
We will indeed.
All right.
All right, uh, I'm gonna put Karen back in the audience.
Okay, please, and then we have, um, we're gonna move on, is that all right? Cuz we're behind our agenda.
Yep.
So the next item is their continuation of the. One thirty-eight River Road discussion that we were having last, last time. Is there a proponent in the audience?
Specific things we gotta talk about, right, so the, um. I think Katie, who was from. Billowish should be in attendance, do we gotta talk about that, and then also. The warrant article about rezoning it to AR is not ours, right, it's a.
It's a citizen's petition.
Citizen's petition, but. Who does, who holds a hearing, or is there, is there a requirement for somebody to hold a hearing about that or not?
We have to hold a hearing on it. Because it's a zoning change, yeah, even though it's not proposed by us.
And, and what point are we going to discuss it among our group? Or is that at the hearing?
I think that's, yes, I think Tom was saying, the meeting after next, we have a hearing on that. Uh, Tom, maybe I misunderstood you.
No, I, it just, it's timing, Thomas, for the, how we have to post it in the, in the paper, and.
No, I get it.
So I was, I was, my, my, uh, thought was, is if we're going to take up discussions on the mall. Uh, and what Marlborough wants to do, where that judiciously fits between the next three meetings that we have, and. As Tim pointed out, time is of the essence, so. The suggestion that we do it in March makes perfect sense, and, uh, we just wanna make sure that. We don't lose sight of the fact that we have to have a hearings for our.
No, I, I guess, I thought you were saying that we were gonna have that. The meeting after the next one.
If we can, if we can post it in the paper, I don't have a problem with that.
So if we were to hold it on the ninth, which is our first meeting in April. And we back up. One, two. Then it needs to be in the paper on the twen- uh, when is that? Twenty-second and the twenty-ninth. Two consecutive weeks. At least fourteen days prior, so the twenty-second is fourteen days, at least fourteen days. Prior to the ninth.
Okay.
Um. So the twenty-second, the twenty-ninth, it would have to go in the paper on the eighteenth, I mean, to the paper, probably, I think on Monday. Um. And it's those three. Articles. And. If you want, I can generate the. The, uh, newspaper piece and send it to the folks that would post it. Or someone else can.
You do such a nice job.
Then I will assume I shall do it, then.
Thank you.
Okay.
So it's gonna be posted on the twenty-second, the twenty-ninth, and it'll be in the paper. Twenty-second, twenty-ninth, it'll be on the paper on the ninth, I mean, yeah.
The hearing will be on the.
The hearing will be on the ninth, yep.
And it'll be for the three articles.
Three articles, and that's it, right, just the three?
I believe so.
Okay.
Cool, great, thank you.
Um. Shall I, I, I make a motion that, uh, we will have a public hearing in accordance with the specifics we just discussed?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote, Caroline McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
JT.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries, unanimous.
Has the, the clerk received? Any. Information from the select board's office in regard to the citizen's petition?
Not that I've seen, no.
Yeah, I was actually wondering about that today.
So I will remind them that according to the state statute. It's delivered to this, the citizen's petition goes to the select board for inclusion on the warrant. And then they notify us. That there's been a citizen's petition formally, and then we. Hold the hearing, so if they haven't officially notified us, then there's a step missing, so I will. Get in touch with them tomorrow as part of this posting process.
Thanks, Tim.
And we're having the hearing in. Zoom?
I would prefer it to be in Zoom.
Fine with me.
Yeah, I think so, I. These things are kind of plumbing, I don't see them as. You know, as something that requires you have a big public forum, and Zoom doesn't accommodate anybody, so.
Right, we get good participation on, better participation on Zoom than we do in person, so unlike.
Yeah, yeah, unless you have a real hot button issue, you're right, yep.
The best is both, though. See, the sign one is gonna have hundreds.
If people know what it's about, they might, you might.
Carolyn's gonna stir.
Yeah, Carolyn's got five hundred people with signs lined up for.
Can't have signs on Zoom, then you can't see your face. May, maybe that's what I'll do, is I'll just make my screen. Uh, a sign.
Yes.
No more will copy.
Yeah, ma- make it the custom background, you know?
Exactly.
Okay, we're, um, the agenda's creeping, so, uh, the time is creeping on the agenda. Is there, uh, any more discussion before we jump into River Road, one thirty-eight River Road? No, okay, is the proponent in the audience?
There is no, there are two. River Road residents in the audience, but that is it.
Oh, there's no Katie, huh?
Nope.
I just sent her. I had sent her a link to the, um, agenda.
Did you send her the right one?
Oh, it was login one, okay, yeah, no, I sent her the wrong one, but, um, but I just. Um, she just sent me an email. At seven twenty-six, and I responded with the correct link to the meeting. But she's not there, huh?
Nope.
But you, you've, you've been corresponding with her, so the likelihood is that she'll be here in a moment?
Yeah, I, um. Asked her for a site plan, which we were, we were asking for at the last meeting. And she said she has not had a site planned done as of yet. Is that something you will require, I'll put it in place, but I don't anticipate one being generated by Marlborough, the land is. Pretty straightforward, so I do not anticipate there being any issues with getting one done in a timely manner.
Well, we don't need it, if, we, we didn't ask for a full-blown site plan, we just asked for a, a sort of an understanding on, you know. What, what was being proposed, so.
Yeah.
Scale, number of bonds, number of buildings, you know, just kind of a tricky sketch.
A conceptual, a conceptual plan.
Absolutely.
And even, even a conceptual layout, I mean, you know, they have to have a solid idea, and, uh.
I mean, are we talking all of it at the front of the property, are we talking it at the back of the property, or?
Exactly.
But there's big issues with the road and access and the burn and. Things, and what she had given us was kind of a marketing thing, right, it was.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, I would say to do a conceptual plan, and there may be things that. She will have to add to it or whatever, but a conceptual plan that I think shows the placement, you know, orientation. And sort of entrance at, you know, to the road, how do you, you know, how do you handle? How do you handle that? It should show at least those three things on a conceptual level, and then we'll have something to talk about, and something for the neighborhood to look at, too.
So I.
When someone wants to put in a business of some sort, you know, restaurant or something, right? To, what, what do we, what are we supposed to? Review on that, like, if someone has some use for a property, other than. Seeing if it is consistent with the bylaw. Is there? Uh, how much more do we need to know about its viability and, you know?
Uh, no, I, 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 my own feeling is it is. Deformer, that we have to. Look at it in terms of the existing uses. Uh, or possible, you know, required amendments of the zoning bylaw, and we can ask for. Whatever we think is reasonably necessary to have that consultation, so what I was saying was. I think. You know, we need a description, we need a high-level conceptual plan, and it needs to address those three critical. Aspects.
But to Jay's point, um, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask. Whether they've thought through the viability aspect, because. As agents of the town, we don't wanna have something that gets half-built or abandoned halfway through or something like that.
No, no.
You know, do you have financing lined up, blah, 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 but. We might have an understanding of, okay, you wanna build a hundred and fifty million dollar project, and. Where are you gonna get the funding from?
Uh, no, no, and if it, if it requires a zoning bylaw change, then, yeah, totally, I agree with you.
So, I, when we la- last met, I think. I'm, I said I would get and ask Kristen if I could talk to town council, and.
Yes.
You said yes. You said yes, and so I spoke with Heather. And she reminded me of the Dover Amendment, which is from the nineteen fifties, and. It addresses religious and educational uses. And. Of course, if you look at our bylaw, religious and educational uses are allowed in this zone by right. With site plan approval. I said to her. Speak to me about. Those components of an educational use that might be considered commercial.
Yeah.
Such as a restaurant. And she said that. The, the way it's interpreted. If it's integrated in, in, and sort of ancillary. Um, it's allowed as part of that educational use. And I, and she said, in, in fact, and I, I hope I'm interpreting her correctly, but I think I am. To try to exclude. Those uses from the, a project. You'd probably end up in a difficult position trying to defend that. So, if you go to, if you get a chance. The Ma- Massachusetts Municipal Association has a piece on the Dover Amendment that's. Fairly short and sweet, but they give you opportunities to. Dig in deeper if you want, by, but, uh. You know, if you, if you look at it, it's. It, they say, here's what to think about when you're reviewing one of these issues, ensure that relevant board and municipal leaders. Are aware of the Dover Amendment, and of course, we are, I talked to Richard Hanks, and he was certainly aware of it, and he reflected on what. He, how he would interpret it, which was similar to Heather. Enlist municipal council input once a filing is received, so. You know, we've already started to have a dialogue with Heather, which is good, encourage active dialogue between the city and town. Uh, community members and the applicant, which I think is the stage we're about to embark on. Recognize that litigation under the Dover Amendment is extremely expensive and can lead to. Real and substantial civil exposure for municipalities and individuals. And, uh, that's sort of the, the last comment, but, so. I think the general interpretation is that it's. It's a use that's allowed, you do have site plan approval, that would. Be under the jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeals. You know, I've always thought the planning board can help proponents. Um, have a initial dialogue between, you know, the neighbors and. The community and the board before it gets to the zoning board of appeals, because the zoning board of appeals really doesn't wanna. Hold someone's hand, they, they really want you to come to the door prepared to present and. Um, with a fairly complete understanding of what you're asking for and why and how it's allowed. Um, so at some point, I would hope that. The proponent would, you know, bring their counsel. And maybe chat with us a little further, have the neighborhood participate, that sort of thing.
And I, you know, I mean, I, I think that the basis for our asking for what I suggested. Is to, is for us to be able to make a threshold determination that this is ancillary to. The five oh one C three. Organization and all, uh, rather a purpose, um. And so, you know, we're just really documenting, this is what we're doing, and this is why it's ancillary to the purpose, and so I think to ask for the conceptual level plan and. A narrative of the connection between the two and dealing with. Access and ingress is, um. Is perfectly reasonable, and it would be before this board, because we're discussing. Whether it actually qualifies for the five oh one C three. Exemption.
And it, and anything they would do with us would help them prepare for their meetings with the ZBA, um.
Totally, yes.
So often, people go to the ZBA and they, they haven't prepared, and as a result, they waste the ZBA's time and. And.
And their money and all of that, yeah.
The project just stalls, so, yeah.
Right, well, in the, uh, along the vein of spending a lot of money. Um, we should really make sure that the, this applicant or this, what's her name, Katie? Knows about the citizen's petition.
Well.
So I just texted one of the select board members, cuz I know they. Were going through the warrant the past couple of weeks, and as far as the select board's concerned, it's still on. They have not heard anything unless it's gonna be passed over on the floor.
Could be, but.
But if it's gonna be on the warrant, it could still be a factor.
If it isn't transferred to us formally. And we don't hold a hearing. It can't be voted on.
Oh.
So it needs to be, cuz the attorney general will throw it out. If we can't say that on such and such a date. After the selectman received it, it was formally given to the planning board. Cuz that's what I do, I go to Eloise after town meeting, I give her all the dates when all the steps were. Took place. And if we screw up, we can't show that the posting in the newspaper was on a certain date. That, you know, X, Y, and Z, the attorney general says no. So that's why I'm saying I'll tell the select board that they have to formally. Get it to us. If, if the zoning changes. It doesn't affect. The ability of this proponent to buy the property and propose the use. If that's what they choose to do, because the use is still allowed in a residential agricultural zone, just as it would be in the limited business zone.
Oh, alright.
Exactly, yep.
So, it, the, the two are related.
No, that's good, I just didn't wanna see this woman spend a lot of time and energy and money. Preparing all of this stuff going in a certain direction, but, um, if it would be allowed anyway, then, good to go.
And, and we should still let her know about it, because it's a matter of interest, but, yeah.
There she is now.
There she is now.
I did tell her about it.
You did tell her about the petition?
Uh, I think we mentioned it last time.
Here she comes. Oh, and there she goes. Not sure what happened.
Hello, Katie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I got on, on the right channel there.
Yep.
I can hear you fine, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, nice to see everybody.
Okay, so we're having a continuation of our discussion of last time. Um, you did send us some information, and thank you. Uh, I know Jay had corresponded with you about, um, site plan, and we don't need a full-blown. You know, tied-out site plan, it was more of getting an understanding of. You know, scale and basically taking the plot plan and just jotting down where you envision. Road entrances to be, and nothing set in stone, but it'll just give us a sense of scale. That allows any of the butters to see, um, you know, what, what, what's being proposed. Whether it's forward on the site, back on the site, however it's going to be configured. And possible impacts on, on, on other, um, you know, people that will be surrounding that. Um, I know you didn't have a chance to prepare that, but we're going to need that as our discussions evolve from here.
Okay, can I have one big question? What is the, 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 what is the question at hand for you? Is it what? From what I'm understanding.
Sure.
Providing a plot plan that will allow the neighbors and the community to understand the project, is that what the question is in hand?
No, actually, the question at hand is. Making the determination that the commercial. Aspects are ancillary to the five oh one C three, and are then. Uh, qualifying for. Uh, the allowed use under our zoning bylaws, so that, you know, for us to then have. And we're not talking about something that's surveyed or anything, we're just talking about a conceptual plan laid over the plot that says. You know, this is, we have residences here, we have, uh, you know, commercial. Entities there, and a narrative saying what the connection between them are, and then. Um. How you propose to get basically on and off the property. So, yeah, we just thought, thought those three things. Roughed out at a high level would allow us to make a determination that. The full range of the activity, if you propose it, qualifies. As an allowed use, a five oh one C three with ancillary commercial uses under the bylaw, so that's our question.
Okay, do you see any aspect that doesn't follow, um, the, um. Dover Act? The, do you see something that's not, I'm not following in regulations on what I've designed?
No, I think what we're talking about is documenting that it fits within the Dover Act, that's really what we're, we're trying to do here.
So you just need a plot plan showing the basic layout of the. Project, uh, of buildings and what's going to be operated in each individual building, and how they interact with each other?
Um, yes, a, a plot plan, one, two, a high-level narrative that says. This commercial, uh. Plot is associated with. You know, this activity, the bakery school, or, you know. Or whatever, just a narrative that says. The connection between each of the commercial entities and, you know, the sort of background activity. That they are ancillary to, do you, do you follow me?
And the, the educational component.
Okay, by any chance, did you receive my brochure? Cuz the brochure in detail talks about how they interact with each other and how they're laid out. So is this separate, you want something like in a letter form? I'm not, I'm not really sure.
I, I think what we're suggesting is something that was sort of in a summary form that could become. Part of the record, um. And. Just particularly to be sort of footnotes to a, um, conceptual. Plan, and again, we're, we're talking about high-level conceptual, not something that we're talking about if you wanted to move. Something fifty feet one way or a hundred feet another, but just a, a concept plan, so people understand what's being proposed.
So i- i- I, I have a concept plan, but you just wanna see it on a, on a site, the site plan. In.
Yeah.
You wanna see.
At a high-level site plan.
Right, I'm gonna take the concept plan and just put it on the site plan, cuz it's not being spread out. Just because the site's twenty-nine acres, it doesn't mean I'm utilizing twenty-nine acres. My site plan is, is condensed for a reason, for the, the students to be able to interact throughout the site.
Right.
Right. And, right, and, and more so, if that, if that little block that you're, you're utilizing, is that forward towards the street? Is it back towards the rear of the property, just sort of a generalized.
Okay, you just wanna see.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking about covering the whole twenty-eight acres from corner to corner, front to back. Or is it, you know, like you had just laid out, it's more condensed, it's near the front. You have some open fields that you're gonna use for hospades or whatever you're gonna do.
Correct, yes.
Yep.
So, a- and so I do now know, in, in, you need to know where septic's going, or like that kind of stuff, okay, okay. Okay, I can do that.
Not this board.
I mean, it's beautiful, just so you know, it is beautiful soil for, for, I'm not gonna have any issues with septic out there, it's beautiful soil, especially on the right side.
We, we've heard that.
Yeah, it's, it's really, I mean, it sounds really corny to say that, but out there, we were very excited. About seeing the, when we did the dig and seeing the soil that was there, so, um, that adds a lot of, you know. Really lays it out easy for us. Um, I do wanna just keep the, the, the plaza, um, not on the street. Obviously, back far enough, so, you know, about a hundred feet, hundred fifty feet back far enough, so that I have decent, um, you know. Frontage, because sometimes that adds for a beautiful plaza for people to see it, and, and more engaging instead of something right on the street. So it is gonna be set back, I am gonna have two entrances, I will design all this out and get you a, a plot plan. Um, but I am gonna have two entrances, one on the right, it's al- almost gonna be symmetrical. Plaza kind of in the center, uh, entrance on the right, and for the restaurant, more or less, and the plaza, and. Then the entrance on the left is going to be for the students, the staff, the teachers. The, um, the, and also for the, uh, the nursery. So people just wanting to pull into the nursery where the students are putting flower arrangements together, they can just pull into the nursery and leave, they don't have to go into the parking lot for the restaurant. So there are gonna be two entrances, it's gonna be pretty symmetrical on either side, on what's happening.
So can you flesh that out a little bit more with, uh, what you anticipate for like, you know, trips or, uh, vehicle travel, you know? Um, I've anticipated a hundred car trips a day, or whatever, on the average, just so we can get a, a sense of. How much that is gonna impact.
Yep, keep it, keep in mind, um, the population of the students pretty much don't thrive. So even though.
Pick them up.
Yeah, we wouldn't have bus systems, um, and have local areas that, that can be drop-offs for families, we're trying to make it as easy for families. Some of the students can take trains, and one of the biggest pieces of, if we can get, uh, buses to and from the street stations that are kind of local. Then we're able to bus the students back and forth.
Got it.
So, one of the things to remember is that. This, this board is here to sort of s- help you screen the project a little bit. But we don't have authority over the project. It's the Zoning Board of Appeals that handles the site plan approval. And if, I, I assume you've got a copy of the Berlin zoning bylaws or gone online and looked at it, but.
Yes.
If you go to the site plan approval section. It's, it's gonna outline the components of what you're gonna have to bring to the ZBA, so as you. Sort of try to answer some of our questions, you know, you don't have to be redundant, just. Look at a lot of those materials that are requested by the, that would be requested by the ZBA eventually, and, and, uh. You know, sort of tailor whatever you offer to us. Based on what you're gonna be expected to give to the ZBA.
Okay, perfect, um, I do so, uh, my, you know, my attorney's guiding me as well, um, just to make sure I'm. Doing the right thing and making sure that, um, I'm presenting everything, uh, like I said, to, to the regulations and. The stipulations that are in the Dover Act, I wanna stay as, as, um, appropriate as possible, so.
Right.
I do, I do appreciate the guidance, I want this to happen, I want this to work, and I want this to be, um, beneficial for everybody, so.
One of the unique things about that property is it has a huge berm in the front between it and the road and the neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, that, there, there's several berms on the property.
And what's that?
There's several on the property, it looks like there was a lot of material pushed in several areas of the property.
Right, but if, I think it would be good to note whether you're planning to remove the berm to open it all up as you were just describing, or whether you're gonna try to.
No, I definitely don't intend to remove all the berms, some of it will have to be removed for entrance to the plaza and, uh, for, and more or less in the center of it. Um, it doesn't make sense to keep all of the berm, I would have a difficult time with entrance, and I'm gonna have to remove some of it. For the two entrances that are going to be put in. So, again, that's something that, now that we're getting to really understand the land, we're, um, in understanding the project, and we're. The two roads are going to be, and what the plaza, how set back it's going to be, now we have some issues to determine on, on. I certainly am not, I wouldn't, it would be too expensive for me to have to remove all of the berm. So, it really is just what has to be removed, I don't wanna take trees down, I don't wanna do any of that, I really wanna keep as much intact as possible. So, like I said, we're keeping it right up front, like, like, in the middle of the, the land, we're not. Gonna disturb left or right, we are gonna have a horse area on the right, I mean, on the left, some of them to graze. And there's gonna be an open acres on the right that we can do pumpkin patches and, and, you know, um, certain things like that for the community involved, so. Otherwise, it's mostly gonna be in, in the middle of the property.
Just a quick question, when you say left and right, are you standing on the street looking at the property?
Correct.
Okay, just, that's how I would say it too, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, you have, uh, a really long frontage. So, um, and we're not utilizing the whole frontage, we just wanna utilize the center of it.
Yeah, and just be aware, there are some conservation issues on the. Yeah, and just be aware there are some conservation issues on the far right.
Yes, yeah, I, yep, yep.
The, I guess my other piece of advice would be to include the police chief and the fire chief in some of your early discussions because they'll be called upon by the ZBA. And then in terms of sightlines for access and stuff like that, if
Of course.
If you get the police chief involved in some of that early discussion, um, and his input, that would probably help you.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Uh, just to, just to, I did hear, um, one individual mention residential, there is no residential on the property. This is strictly a day, a day program.
Would there be a, a caretaker at all on the property or just security at night or what would you do?
Security, but i- we have a, a groundskeeper. We also have security and we also have this, the staff involves, um, we call them guardians or shadows for the students.
But there's nobody overnight?
No, not, we're not, well, you know what, if I have to, I will. I haven't gotten down to that path of whether or not it's needed. Uh, um, so whether or not we have to gate it, uh, it's possible only because of the issue we're dealing with adults with disabilities. Um, and we don't know to keep them safe from leaving or, or any situation like that. We don't know what that is, what that looks like. I don't anticipate that being the issue, but we, you, you really, really have to make sure we hit every question. And make sure we, we want to make sure everybody is safe as well as, um, you know, easy access and that the campus is staying secure as well. So I'm not sure if it's a, a gate issue or if it's going to be a security issue. I'm really not sure at this point. As I said, we've looked in, I, I was close to purchasing land in probably three different towns. Um, and some of the issues that we none of, the, the, the land that we were looking at prior to in these different towns were all had issues and of the project not being built. Maybe it was wetlands, one of them was wetlands and one was is, was an access to the actual site. We couldn't get access to the site. So, um, this is the first piece of land that I've had to actually dive in and say, okay, here we go. And that is a good question I have not actually thought of at this point. But it's not something that isn't fixable. Easily I can make a decision and then just implement it.
And I assume the listing realtor, you've been in communication with her?
Yes, I was, she was with me on the site on Friday, all day.
Okay.
And I've also been, um, in touch with my friend, Congresswoman Trahan. She's a good friend of mine from high school. We graduated. And, um, she's very, very excited because she's been supporting me for many years. So she's extremely excited and she's very much, uh, anything that we need, anything that for the town, anything at all that she's willing to jump in and help out.
Does any board members have any additional questions?
No.
Not at the moment.
No, this has been helpful.
Yeah, I, I'd just say thank you for, uh, your, uh, attention, understanding and openness to, uh, help us help you in this project.
No, I, it, we're a team. Now we're a team going forward and I think it's really crucial. Um, this is an important project, not just for me, but I think it's important for the community and, um, it's going to help a lot of people. So I appreciate you guys working with me as well.
Is there, um, anybody in the audience that have any questions or?
Absolutely.
Hi Katie, this is Karen Brown and Michael Harding. We're one of the butters directly across the street at one eighty-three River Road.
Yeah, hi Karen, how are you?
Good, good. We chatted last time. I made the point about the road and the, um, traffic. Our little neighborhood, about twelve houses. Um, also I'm wondering, we just had a discussion earlier this evening and being more collaborative with boards to get, get the neighborhood more involved and, uh, understanding and also helping to shape and guide.
Sure.
We have, um, we have quite a bit happening in our neighborhood and of course we want to keep it a neighborhood. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are around hosting something, uh, whether it's at my house or another neighbor's house to help position this project to the rest of the neighborhood.
I think that's fantastic. I think that, uh, just give it a few weeks so we need to get through. Uh, we're purchasing the land and lead to get through the closing and make sure everything's intact. I think that if we, if we do like an information session, I'd be more than happy to come and speak to all the neighbors and ask all the questions. Uh, I think it's important for all of you to be involved in the project and know the timeframe and know what's happening and be upfront and, and, um, being involved because it is a community-based project. It is going to be in the neighborhood and um, I want you to understand wholeheartedly that to me, this is, this is like, um, it's like going back in time to when we were villages and we took care of each other and everything was created onsite and everything was handled onsite and everything was, um, you know, in that village, it was teamwork and it all happened to take care of everyone that was part of that village. And this is how I feel about any community that this campus is going to be put in. We don't plan on building one of these. We plan on building several. So it's really important for you to understand how much this matters to me that it is your village as well as it is for anyone else that's being on that campus and enjoying the different elements that these students are creating and, and offering to the community.
Great. We're a village too, and so we need to be taken care of as well.
Absolutely.
And, um, some of the things that you've mentioned and how you position left, right, this and things coming down here and retail. That's very scary for a neighborhood of homes to have something like this dropped in the middle of it. And to have cars and buses and retail. And the screening and the working with the neighbors and maybe you have a design in your mind, but I would hope you were open to hearing what the neighborhood input is so that we are taking care of each other. Like you say, I can't stress it enough either. We need to make sure we take care of the neighborhood. I think the, um, the school and everything is wonderful. Um, and I will continue to parrot what you say. We've been there, most of us over thirty years. And so I know you're looking off to the side, but you know, it is true. We, we do have a very strong neighborhood that we would like to be left as a neighborhood. We want to be heard. I think someone who comes in wants to steamroll over and use different components to make their points is going to not work so well with the neighborhood. So that's the type of collaboration we're looking for. And, um, that's what the neighborhood would like is for you to take care of us too. We've been there longer. It was residential. It is a nice piece of land. We want something nice to go in there. But you got to take care of us too.
Uh, is that a question? I'm so sorry. I'm not steamrolling anyone.
Okay, we just, we'd like to have that conversation before things are put into concrete that this is the way it's going to be, that there is input from the neighborhood. And that the neighborhood has that conversation with you and that there is collaboration, that we are taking care of the neighborhood as well.
Yes, I do agree with having an information session for the neighborhood.
And, and I would also say that going right back to the beginning of this conversation, that one of the reasons why the planning board wanted to sort of formally document the various steps um, and definitions of the project, that this gives an opportunity for the, uh, for the neighborhood to, uh, view it and to comment on it. And uh, it seems like we, we are going to get cooperation in that regard. So I look forward.
Absolutely.
So will you be contacting the planning board, the select board, someone in the neighborhood? How would we like to tie up a date and drive this forward, make sure that our input is heard and that we are working collaboratively together on this?
Sure, um, like I said, it's going to take a few weeks before, uh, the closing is April eighth for the property. So that's a, a first date to keep in mind. And Karen, you're more than welcome to go onto Philineet Foundation website and you can contact me through email through the website.
Why don't you give me your email now? Because I'm not sure I can hear you phone correctly.
No, that's not a good idea.
You don't want to do that on Zoom, no.
Oh, okay, um, how do I get the exact name of your company?
It's called Phil A Need Foundation.
Okay, Phil A Need Foundation, okay. Okay.
Okay, I'd be more than happy to speak with you and then we can get a date in place in the future after the closing and after, uh, I've re- been able to communicate with the, uh, planning board and give them material that they're requesting at this point.
Okeydoke. All right.
All righty, any additional questions? Any comments, further comments from the board? Okay.
Karen, I'm going to put you back in the audience.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any last words, Katie?
No, I appreciate your time, everybody. And, um, I know this is very different, especially for a small town that, um, you know, is very spread out, you know, having residential on, like, not close up to each other and having something like this uh, is a big change. And I, I will do with every bit of my power to make sure that this change is, um, a comfortable one and one that is not going to harm anyone or damage anyone or I, I know the neighbors are concerned that I'm, I need to protect them. Um, I, I have no intention of bringing anything to this site that's going to do any harm or danger to any of the neighbors at all. So I just want to make sure that this is not something that I'm not, that I want to work as much as possible with everyone for this because in the long run, it will benefit the community as well if it's ben- as it is benefiting the, um, the students that need it.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you everyone. I'm going to, because I made myself on the panel by accident, so I'm going to, I'll log out, okay? Thank you. Everyone enjoy your St. Patrick's Day, okay?
You too.
Thank you.
All righty. Um, any other timely items for the board's consideration? Mr. Wheeler has a couple of items.
He's not to say in peace?
Or maybe he's next piece.
The, the commission, um, I expect that the, uh, the physical development committee at the commission is going to get a proposal for a continuation of the cottage housing study which we, we were hoping they would do. And I talked to Victoria and she said they're putting together a proposal that I, my committee's going to meet on. When do we meet? We meet in a couple, no, yeah, we, we meet before too long and so it won't be too long before I can update you on that, but I would assume that the committee will approve the, the request and they'll continue on with that study. So we should begin to hear something from, uh, from Jane in regard to the zoning diagnostic. We sh- we're, we're part of the accessory dwelling unit study at the commission and we're going to be part of this continuation for the cottage housing stuff. So all those conversations are going to help push the cause forward. So that's, it sounds good from what I understand.
Good. And maybe that'll help with the, uh, our ask will help with any funding needs that we may have.
Yeah. Yeah, um, Tom and I've chatted a little bit because Kristen got in touch with us and just said, you're asking for fifteen thousand for master plan money on the town warrant and we said, yep. And we've got some parts of the zoning bylaw that need to be updated that we haven't tracked down lately and whereas most towns spend sixty or seventy or eighty thousand every five or six years, we'd rather do it incrementally and we'd like to continue to do it that way. So the fif- the fifteen thousand is a jump from where we were, but, um, it's appropriate given the fact we were living off of five and five really wasn't enough anymore by far, so. But we, we would hopefully we tackle transportation again and that could integrate with the complete streets and the Route sixty-two corridor study stuff and update the master plan in regard to that. And then an- another look at economic development, um, which we haven't done since eighteen or something like that. So that would be appropriate. And then some towns are I think they call it governance. I
We did a governance part of, had to be several years ago.
Yeah, so you know, those, if we get the money, then we can begin to pursue some of those pieces of the master plan and integrate that with the other work that's been done on the open space and housing and stuff, so. There's also, um, where did I have it? I went to the Assabitt Regional Housing Collaborative Meeting on the fifth of March and they had a lot of legislators there. The Affordable Housing Act, which is a port, which, which got passed last year, has a community investment tax credit component which they would, they began to talk about, there, there's a fund that's going to begin to be created on the state level. But there's a luxury transfer fee that I think communities can begin to look at and there's, there's a healthy homes program. There's a bunch of stuff. And I think we'll probably, um, I think the housing trust will probably pick up on parts of this, but it may involve us to some degree as things progress. So but there was some exciting opportunities in terms of housing. I think that that whole you know, Affordable Housing Act that Mara Healy pushed through was I, I don't think any of us fully understand the total implications for communities yet. So we'll, we'll learn more about that. But ADUs were certainly part of that, so. That's some of the follow.
Great.
That's all I have.
Excellent.
I'll get the hearing posted.
Thank you.
And I'll talk to the select board about getting us a formal request on that zoning article.
And Thomas will
Get the, the language on the, yep. Yep.
The bouncy houses.
Fun castle, whatever, yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, um, Jay and I will, uh, text to coordinate beginning passing that A and R around. We'll exchange it and then I'll take it over to Timothy's and we'll go from there.
Me.
Come by and see your new fence.
Oh, I haven't been over there. Um, I need to. Thank you, Jay, that was
There was a lot of ledge. It's going to be very expensive.
No. Well, then thank you twice.
We had to do a lot of plastering.
Right. I wonder if my electricity went out down here and down.
Rock in Berlin? What?
Not down here.
Yeah, I was going to say, especially on Jay's property.
Yeah, up there maybe, but I can plow for miles and miles without hitting a rock.
Jealous.
I know where they are. There's about four.
They, they rolled down the hill off of Jay's pro- off of Jay's.
No, they're just under the surface enough. So if I forget where they are, I line up buildings and telephone poles and I say, okay, this is where it is. And I, I paused when I, when I'm plowing and I most of the time I can just touch it and glide right over it. If I forget, I get a jolt. It's really not.
Here's what I do, Tim. There'll be a big rock in the middle of the paddock or something. So I'll go, oh. Right, hole over here. I'll dig the rock out. I'll drop it in the hole. And I'll be all set. But then when I go to dig the other hole, there's like a hundred rocks there.
Yeah, it's, that's a loser's game. The house always wins.
Yeah.
All right.
Super. I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. It's non-negotiable. So I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Stafford, aye. Motion carries unanimously.